Seven o'clock, let's call the meeting to order with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome. Clerk Cody, would you please do a roll call of the board?
Supervisor Milkie.
Here.
Treasurer Rice.
Here.
Trustee Bills.
Here.
Trustee Brown.
Here.
Trustee Houck.
Here.
Trustee Thering.
Here.
And Clerk Cody here.
All accounted for, I'd like it again. That brings us to item four on Agenda, Approval of the Agenda. I would be happy to entertain any motions regarding the agenda.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda with one addition. I'd like to present the managers with the Township Manager Evaluation Form during the meeting at some point. I don't worry about it.
New business, E. E.
E, item E, please.
Support.
Motion by Bills, support by Rice, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor to approve the agenda with the one addition, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. That brings us to item five on the agenda, there are no presentations tonight, public hearings there are none. So that brings us to item seven, Public Comment. Public comment is restricted to three minutes regarding items on this agenda. Note that if you choose to address the public, please state your name and address for the record. And I don't have my notes in front of me regarding remote dialing. It's pounce if you're in through Zoom, hit star nine to raise your hand to be noticed. If you are using normal user interface with Zoom with a computer or a phone, please...
Click on the raise hand icon near the bottom of the screen.
And you'll be recognized in the order which I'm giving your names. And with that, we'll open Public Comment at 7:03 PM.
Can I begin? Good evening, Jonathan Wilson, I'm the Regional Corporate and Government Affairs Manager for DTE Energy. I don't have a local address, sorry, I came from Muskegon. I'm here in support and in hopes that you will support the franchise agreement resolution renewal for DTE Energy and DTE Gas. We've been in the community for thirty years and longer, providing natural gas service to businesses and residents. We have about 1.3 million customers across the state, including Union Township. And we're, I'm here to answer any questions. I wanted to also let you know that DTE Foundation supports nonprofits and organizations around the region as well. So if any of you have any nonprofits or events you want to partner with DTE on, I would encourage you to reach out to me over the next six months to twelve months and let me know where we can be a good corporate citizen. Thank you.
Thank you, Jonathan.
Thank you. Thank you.
Seeing no further in-person public comment, do we have anybody from virtual?
No one's on.
Seeing no one else coming forward, we'll close Public Comment at 7:04 PM. No closed session that I've heard of is being proposed tonight, I'm just looking at my board, because you all have the right to call that. That brings us to item nine, Report Boards and Comments, I don't believe we have any appointments this evening. Board Member Reports, let's start with Trustee Brown.
I have no report today.
Trustee Bills.
I attended a meeting of the Isabella County Board of Commissioners on September sixth, work session. There wasn't much to the meeting, honestly, I didn't make any notes, anything to give you guys, so it was pretty nondescript, that's all.
I'll just make a comment, since we've gone to the hybrid meetings, what we found in the testing with hybrid is it's really helpful to have your microphones down. Just, just so that you can be heard, and I'm assuming that helps Hazen have you be picked up.
Yes.
In the sound. Trustee Thering.
Nothing this week, probably in two weeks I'll have something.
Very good. Treasurer Rice?
All right, today was a big day, today is last day of summer taxes, they were due today. If you're watching, please go online and pay online by midnight if you haven't already, otherwise fees add tomorrow. So, that, or we also have a drop box, that if it is in the drop box before we open, and, well, I should say, in the drop box before the ladies get here in the morning and pull them, then we can apply it, otherwise they're late and penalties will be added. So, yeah, that's it on my plate.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
How did it go for collections this summer, did everybody pretty much pay their taxes already?
Um, I haven't even looked at the numbers, to be honest, but, oh, Sherry's raising her hand, Sherry's seen.
We usually end up with about three hundred.
Correct.
Better past.
Oh, wow.
Usually.
Wow, okay.
So, had a lot of phone calls this week, so I tried to make sure to tell them, pay online or get in.
Yeah. Yeah.
Do a large percentage of people take the opportunity online, the convenience of that?
Not as much as we want, but, there, there have been an increased amount, I believe, that the more that they know that that is an option. But Mark, did you have something to say about that?
There's been a marked increase in the volume of online payments of every type across the board over the last several years.
It's good to see.
There were lots that still, even to this day, didn't know that that was an option, so we're trying to get it out there.
Well, watch our meetings, because you bring it up a lot, and try to inform people that that's available.
Yep, I try.
Clerk Cody? Trustee Houck?
I went to a couple of road commission meetings, one on the twenty-fifth of August. Chip sealing is done in the county, striping has gotten done, so I mean, most of our roads have been striped. If you see, you go out your road, you probably see it's been striped. Mission Road is supposed to start probably next week, they said the second full week of September. Carriage Lane started this week, maybe late last week, it was supposed to start the eighth. But they said on the twenty-fifth that it was going to start like on the ninth, so whatever. For next year, there's a hundred and ten requests for new bridges in the state, and there's only a capability of doing sixty. So I thought that was kind of interesting, so I guess they just keep, like everything else, it just keeps getting pushed back until there's more funding and more people to do the work, too. All gravel roads and limestone roads are done. Our third, our third application of salt brine went down last week. I know a lot of people on Deerfield Road were wondering when that was going to get brined again, so it got brined late last week. So that's keeping dust down, people need to go forty-five on that road. I was down a few times here lately checking it out. One day last week, I went down it and a landscaper went past me. I turned off a Crawford onto Deerfield, he passed me before I got to the water tower. And by the time I got to Lincoln and Deerfield Road, he was already to the intersection of Deerfield and Whiteville. I mean, he had brushed line out of the back of his pickup and it got all over the road, so I pulled over and threw a few of those branches off the road. They talked about some court cases with farm machinery going down the roads. And that's kind of interesting, some of the stuff that happened with that. It can be sixteen foot wide if you're a farmer. They can haul sixteen foot wide equipment without having a guide, a guide car or a trail car. Where if an implement dealer sells a farmer something sixteen foot wide, they have to have a guide car and a trail car. And they've had a couple of instances, there was one in Isabella County, and then there was one in Midland County. In Midland County, the judge just waived it, and in Isabella County, the guy got a ticket, so they're fighting that. One of the main things that everybody's probably wondering about is Isabella, or the corner down here, Lincoln and Broomfield. I spent a few days down here lately, I went down there last Friday. I met Pat Gaffney down there and he showed me everything that was going on. There's been a delay down there, I don't know if anybody's heard, they ran into water. So when they were going to put storm drain down, when they were digging, it kept collapsing because of water. Well, all the water from up on the hill up there, like, just say behind the golf center, by, we're all familiar with that area. So all that water's coming towards the river. So what they did Saturday is they went out, and they call it de-watering, they went out Saturday, had a company come in and they went three hundred and fifty feet from the river and drilled holes seventeen feet down, and then there's pipe down in there, and they're pumping the water up. I've got videos and pictures, if somebody wants to see it, it's pretty amazing. Well, they're draining, when I, I'll step backwards, when I went back there Friday with Pat Gaffney, the engineer, where the hole was dug for the drain, or for the storm sewer, he said, watch the water flowing in. And Jeff, you can help me out here, what's the safety cages that they have down in?
Trench boxes.
Okay, they had one of those down in there, and there was, you know, three foot of water in that thing. So, and the water was just flowing in from that whole area. So what they're doing is they're drilling little wells down through there, just say, they're drilling holes, and then they're, so they went three hundred and fifty feet from the river, and they're pumping that water out. So I went there Monday and looked at it, and it was trickling still pretty good in that hole. Well, then I went there today, and it's just amazing how much water they've pumped out of there. It's just, it's barely trickling now. So then the next move is they're going to add on to that, they're going to go down to the corner and then wing it east and west. They're going to pump that water out, and once that's all done, then the McGurk's have all kinds of equipment staged there. So they're really going to be able to pound on that thing once they get the water out of there. They've got to get the water out first, so they can put storm drain down. Because the storm drains got to go in before they can do anything above ground. So it's really made a lot of progress, and if you guys saw this video, there's an eight inch line coming out of that pump, and that thing's just roaring down there, and it's going into a catch basin, and then it just goes to the river. But, I mean, that water, it just, it's just pumping in there like crazy. But like I said, it's, it's amazing how much it's dried out. But then, once they get that done, I talked to Tony today when I was out there, and Tony Casselli, the road commission manager, and he said that, once that dries out, McGurk's, like I said, they have all kinds of equipment down there, and they'll be able to get going on the thing pretty good. And then, they're going to shut that road down. I mean, I couldn't believe the amount of cars going through there, and they weren't going slow, some of them. It's, you know, I mean, I, I was walking down the road and just like, just today, I was walking down the road and somebody came past me, probably forty. I mean, for me at least, I just kind of stepped out of the way and it kept coming. But anyways, one of the main things, though, is going down Deerfield Road, just try to stress to people, go forty-five, because there's a lot of complaints on that road, because people are going too fast on it, and it's a gravel road. Well, it's a limestone road, but whatever, so, any other questions?
Just a comment, typically I've been taking the Meridian detour from my house, but my wife has been taking Deerfield, and she's been complimenting, let me, let me back up. She's not real happy having to wait three months, so I'll preface it with that. But having said that, she's very complimentary of the road commission. After each rain we've had, they've gone out and graded that. And it's, it's very noticeable. And so kudos to them for taking care of that, because Deerfield can get, be a mess pretty quickly.
Yeah, they've been grading it a lot, I, two times when I've been down it, they've been grading it, since this project has started.
So you can tell her my wife noticed.
All right.
Thank you, very much.
Thanks, Bill.
And I don't really have anything to offer at this point, so let's, regarding Board Member Reports, let's move to item ten on the agenda, Consent Agenda.
I make a motion to approve the Consent Agenda.
Support.
I had warrants also.
Motion by Bills, support by Rice, discussion?
Yeah, I have a discussion item for the Consent Agenda. On it, it says that Jeff Brown, Trustee Brown, wasn't here for roll call, but he was, because he made a couple of motions that night, so I just want to make sure that his name gets put down on there for being here at the meeting. His name's not on there, right?
Correct.
And you, I know you were here.
Yeah.
He's sometimes invisible. I don't know.
That's a little harsh.
I don't know, it doesn't say Smithy.
All right, so we have a correction to the minutes, any other discussion on the Consent Agenda? All in favor to approve the Consent Agenda with the correction to the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion passes. That brings us to item eleven, New Business, item A. This is introduction, first reading of the DTE Energy Company Gas Franchise Ordinance. Mr. Stuhl dryer, would you like to introduce anything on this?
Just very briefly, there'll be some paperwork on this that begins on page twenty-four of your agenda packet. We do have an existing franchise agreement with DTE that was last approved by the board in nineteen ninety-three. It expires in early twenty twenty-three, so this proposed ordinance is to, to extend the franchise agreement for an additional thirty years for the natural gas services in the township. You may recall approving a similar franchise agreement with Consumers Energy earlier this year, I believe it was in January. And the board can expect to see at the next meeting an agenda item for the second reading and recommended adoption. That's all I have.
Very good.
How are you guys getting, there's no internet, how are you guys, how are you guys logged in?
It says I'm on the internet.
What's that?
It says I'm on the internet, I mean, I'm on, I'm able to access.
I just download the packet before I come, so I already have it.
Yeah, I have it, I guess I have, well, I can't get on the internet, though. Whatever, I printed it off, so.
I'll make a motion to introduce and conduct a first reading for the proposed new DTE Energy Company Gas Franchise Ordinance.
Support.
Motion by Rice, I heard Bills first, if that's okay, support by Bills. Discussion, I'm assuming everybody read through this. I, I had one question that I had asked our manager earlier in the week, and if, if this board is okay with it, I'd like to ask the representative from DTE to answer the question, because that was useful to me. And it wasn't critical to my decision-making, it was more a point of interest. And the question I asked was, why do we even do this? This seems like, you know, public utilities is, is a service, it seems nuanced to me, I'm not sure that's the right word, to even have to go through this exercise. And so our manager wasn't quite sure the answer to that, so I had the opportunity before the meeting to ask our DTE representative. And so I ask you that question now, so you can answer that to the board if you don't mind.
Definitely, Jonathan Wilson, DTE Energy. So when the franchise agreements were first established, we went into communities, and some communities didn't want the infrastructure. So it's basically letting the utility in the community know, the state know, that the community supports having the utility, the utility there. It's also so you can keep tabs on how many other utility franchise agreements you have in place. They're all, they're all non-exclusive, so you can have as many natural gas providers as you want provide natural gas service in your communities. It's a, it's really an effort to keep track of everything. That's it.
It does, thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I, I just didn't understand the, the reasoning on why we go through this exercise. And I remember doing this with consumers, and, not that I'm opposed to what's in front of us, but. Any further discussion on the first reading? And then the motion was to conduct the first reading, correct?
Correct.
And I don't want to misstate it. Introduction and first reading. All in favor of the motion to complete the first reading and the introduction of the DTE Energy Company Gas Franchise Ordinance, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Safe travels back, too.
Thank you. Thank you.
That completes item A, brings us to item eleven B on the agenda, Resolution of Intent and Authorization for Purchase of a New Outdoor Fitness Court for McDonald Park. With that, I'd be happy to have our manager introduce us if you'd like.
Thank you, and what we're asking the board to do, paperwork on this is on page twenty-eight of your packet. What we're requesting the board to consider is to adopt a resolution of intent to participate in the National Fitness Campaign's Outdoor Fitness Court Initiative in Michigan. It's a program sponsored at the state level by Priority Health to authorize FY twenty twenty-two appropriation of up to one hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars for the purchase of this equipment that would be located at McDonald Park using the ARPA or the American Rescue Plan Act funds. And to amend the FY twenty-two budget is appropriate to reflect this action. Priority Health is the second largest health provider in Michigan. They have partnered with this National Fitness Campaign to expand free access to high-quality workouts by bringing outdoor fitness facilities to cities across Michigan. This program has resulted in a number of these, I call them facilities. Over the past several years, all within the lower peninsula of Michigan, they have a goal of developing fifteen more of these fitness centers across the state by twenty twenty-four. And Union Township was identified as, as a desirable location for one of these facilities. So we, we entered into some discussions with them, that brought this item forward to you tonight. Priority Health has a grant program where they, if you are awarded, you, you can be awarded thirty thousand dollars to help with the funding of the facility. They want to award fifteen grants in FY twenty twenty-two, and they have one or two left this year. And so, again, kind of why this is being brought to you rather quickly. This fitness court, and there's several pictures of it in your packet, it's a thirty-eight square foot pad, if you will, with, it's barrier-free, so it's accessible to the disabled, it's designed for persons of all abilities. It is designed for folks fourteen years and, and older. In our exploring of this, there's minimal maintenance, it appears to be very durable. Mr. Nanny went down to Oakland University, they've had one there since two thousand and nineteen, held up very well. It's on an elevated part of their campus, it's exposed. Held up very well, it's on an elevated part of their campus, it's exposed to all the weather, the wind and the sun, rain and snow. And it appears to be holding up, um, very well. The, there's another piece to this program which, if you looked at some of the pictures, there's a kind of a large wall, I'll say, where some of the equipment is affixed to. And as part of this program, that they have a means to, uh, allow a local artist through, uh, through a process to, uh, put a painting or something on that to, uh, kind of dress it up a little bit and make it look unique to the, to, to the local area. We're looking to work with art reach on that component of it. This resolution of intent is to basically notice the, uh, the National Fitness Campaign and Priority Health that if approved, that says to them, the local union government approves this and they need that as part of their grant application paperwork. I think this, uh, facility meets a number of ends, goals in your, in, in section of your policy document, healthy lifestyle, uh, activities for, um, teenagers, albeit older teenagers. If we act now, we will preserve the twenty twenty-two pricing. If we delay till twenty twenty-three, we can expect, you know, fifteen percent more expenses if, if we continue to pursue it at that time. The project will be implemented over two fiscal years. So there'll be, uh, if approved, a budget amendment for the hundred and sixty-eight thousand in FY twenty-two. And then the balance of approximately forty-seven thousand, I will say in twenty twenty-three that you would see in the manager's recommended budget. The resources, if approved, that we'd be committing, township would be committing for this year is a hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars. Again, the administration is recommending the use of ARPA funds. That is, uh, I think the maximum, I'll call it exposure, our intent is to apply for two percent funding. So to the extent we received any of that, that would reduce our obligation against the one hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars. The recent, uh, Treasury has issued some interim final rules on the ARPA funding. Through that process, they, they created the standard allowance of up to ten million dollars that local uni- uh, units of government can use the funds for what's called governmental services. And prior to that, you had to demonstrate lost revenue and then demonstrate how the use of the funds would be used to help, um, eradicate or reduce some of the negative impacts from COVID. And through the public comment period, the, uh, for the smaller units of government like Union Township, all this paperwork and all this is, becomes quite cumbersome. So they, they, they carved out this amount that, um, they call standard allowance. It allows for, um, simple, more simplified reporting of the use of funds. And it allows for the funds to be used for governmental services, which can be anything, roads, recreation, salaries, anything. This is, I recognize, the first, um, recommendation by the administration for the use of ARPA funds. There is a desire by the board, I understand, to, um, talk about the use of those funds more globally. I don't, uh, mean to get ahead of that discussion, but I do think that from what I've heard from the board on prior discussions of ARPA funds, the readings of the, uh, ends, that this opportunity, um, I think is one that would, from my perspective, is it is hard to pass up. I will let the board know, and I was going to make it known in manager comments somewhat related, we do have a, the plan right now is to bring to the board at your next meeting, a participation agreement with the County Road Commission to do some work on Broomfield east of the current project. And that recommendation will be coming, um, with the use of ARPA funds for that road work. That's a five hundred thousand dollar project. Two hundred and fifty split between the county and road commission. I say that only because, um, in my mind, you know, ARPA funds for roads, ARPA funds for recreation facilities fits right in with, uh, with the objectives of this board. So with that, I'll be happy to answer any more questions you have.
Questions? Trustee Bills?
Do we make a motion first or?
You can, but if you have questions for our manager
Alright, well, I, I am wondering, if we're spending two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars on the project and Priority Health is only going to spend thirty, why does it say brought to you by Priority Health? And why doesn't it say partially funded by? I mean, because that's ten percent, or, you know, whatever, fifteen percent. That's the only problem I have. I happen to personally think there's, you know, uh, to, that, that may be a little bit misrepresenting the whole project.
I can't answer that.
Okay.
That's a marketing question.
Yeah, that sure is.
Yeah, yeah, I, you know, I hadn't thought of that, but I appreciate that perspective.
It irritates me.
Yeah, I get that.
They're getting a little bang for their buck there. And they don't, they don't pay very well. They're, they're, okay, I'm not going to go in there, I'm not going in there.
Uh, any other questions for our manager at this time?
That's a good point, Connie. I never realized that, but, so, I never thought about how the outside of that will say Priority Health on it.
Says brought to you by Priority Health, and it should say partially funded by, at least.
And I can, I cannot say for certain that that verbiage that you're looking at is exactly what would appear here.
Yeah, because I mean, that isn't an example facility and maybe in that case they were the primary funder, I don't know, but your point is very valid and I appreciate it.
What did I say? They're putting in, trying to put in twenty-four of these around the state. I don't know what twenty-four times thirty thousand is, but.
Yeah.
And I cannot comment, nor would I dare comment on another organization's, uh, pay scales.
You look like you have something.
If they designed it though, I mean, if it's their design too, of their idea, their, you know. I mean, I can see why they have their name on it, but.
Well, it's not their design. Actually, it says that it was invented and then it was first sponsored by Wells Fargo.
Yeah.
So, some of these other guys, there's four guys there that says they invented it, so. I don't know.
I don't have any questions, but is this okay to have discussion without a motion?
You would normally have a motion.
Normally, normally, no.
Okay, well then, I'll wait, it's okay.
Yeah, I was looking for questions from our manager regarding, um, his presentation or introduction of this.
Thank you, manager, that was a great presentation.
I'll make a motion to adopt a resolution of intent to participate in the National Fitness Campaign's Outdoor Fitness Court Initiative in Michigan sponsored by Priority Health to authorize a FY twenty twenty-two appropriation of up to one hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars for the purchase of an outdoor fitness court facility for McDonald Park using the American Rescue Plan Act funds received by the township. And to amend the FY twenty twenty-two budget as appropriate to reflect this action.
Support.
So, motion by Rice, support, um, by Cody, uh, discussion, trustee Thering, since.
Yeah, um, well, I mean, I think, I, I like the project, I'm excited to see how we can incorporate, uh, art reach. Um, it definitely has an impact on a lot of people. The use of ARPA funds, I, I, I'm a little bit torn because this is what ARPA funds, I think, in, in very small conversations that we've had, this would apply. But this is a one-time gift that we have to use, so I want to make sure that we get the, the most that we can out of that and, and not having had any discussion. I understand why manager Stuhl dryer put that in there, I, I, you know, I would have, I think I would like to have more discussion before we use ARPA funds so that we really feel like this is, this is exactly what we, we want with the ARPA funds. Also, I just started thinking a little bit outside the box, not to take away from this project, because I think it's very well done and, and presented. But just right off the cuff, I thought, what would, is there something that could maybe have more benefit to the community? And I just thought to myself, whether it's possible or not, talking about McDonald Park, is what if we had a paved pathway that went around the hole outside of McDonald Park? With some trees and benches and, and we could incorporate art reach in some ways along the pathway, a place for people to walk. Everybody can use it. It, it would be quite a lengthy walk for somebody to come down and have, but it does, it, it does, uh, it's exercise, it's, I'm just trying to think something different. This is, this is part of the discussion I would like to have before we start saying ARPA funds.
I like what you're saying.
It's a, it's not the appropriate time to talk. Can you put that in your, like, comments at the end versus in this part because we're talking about this project specifically?
Well, he's pretty much saying he'd like to table it until we can have our, our discussion.
I, I have to have a discussion if I, I can't do it after the fact, can I?
I, I think your point, um, is, is really that you were preferring to have some of those other discussions prior to making any.
Okay, I get you.
Is it just the time to have the discussion? I can't wait till after the fact to, to.
Well, you can vote no, and we can ta, or we could table it until later, till we can have more information. I think.
Well, okay, I guess, I guess my, my, my thought is, is, is there other ideas out there that may have the same effect or even maybe a better effect for the citizens, I guess. That's my feeling.
Trustee Bills?
Yeah, and so kind of in line with that too, because I'm, I'm struck by the sticker price on this. I really am. It's just a lot of money for a little fitness court. And I don't know how big it is, but look. What did you, what did, um, the city pay for the, the equipment they put in at Island Park when they put that pathway in? A year ago, or a year and a half ago? You know, we don't have that information. That's not, nobody's name is on that, you know? And that, that's, that's outdoor fitness equip, equipment that's, that's out, you know, designed to last for decades. That, I'd like that information before voting yes on this. It's a lot of money, very stationary. And I mean, you look at some of those pictures and the, the stuff is breaking down, so, I don't know. I don't, I don't know if I want to spend two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars on that.
Clerk Cody?
I love this project, and I think Mark hit a good spot when he found this project because I know trustee Brown has mentioned it, the age group focus on, you know, for teenagers. And this is hitting that, more activities outside for teenagers and hitting that certain age group. I mean, honestly, I think this is a really good project. And we get what, one point seven million?
One point four.
One point three five?
It knocks it down to.
One point two four.
So this is a.
One million four hundred twenty-four thousand, right?
You guys are answering the question, so.
I thought it was one point three five.
Answer it, or if you.
How much, yeah, I was looking at Mark when I asked it.
I'm asking you to confirm which number because a few are being bounced. Are you able to do that?
The total ARPA?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Approximately one point four million.
One point, and it's only a hundred and sixty-eight thousand.
Ten percent of that.
And how much did the sidewalk cost that was right here?
That's already been earmarked for years, so.
And I was just saying, it's costing about the same. I mean, it's expensive to put cement down and different, it's just expensive.
Trustee Hulk?
I agree with, you know, like James, I mean, you go to, up at Rose Bush, you go around the Isabella Township Park, there's a pathway all the way around it, it's about three quarters of a mile. There's little things around there that you can do, you know? Less than a stone's throw away. I mean, take a driver and take your driver and hit it over to, um, the Commission on Aging, if there's a path back there, and they've got some of this equipment out there too, by the Commission on Aging.
In downtown Mount Pleasant at Island Park?
I am concerned about.
No, it's not.
Some of it, like, I hope it doesn't get damaged by, we don't, I don't think we have much damage at our parks back here though. I'd really, I've been wondering when we were going to have discussion. I had it written down before tonight too with ARPA funds. You know, we'd been discussing what we're going to do. I know we got a lot of infrastructure projects that could be taken care of, you know? We've talked about some solar lighting to maybe reduce our Consumers Energy bill every month. I know, you know, Jeff, you and I've had discussions about, you know, sewer pumps, stuff like that. I mean, I like this, don't get me wrong.
I love it, but I, you know, it's a lot of, it's a lot of money.
I think more people would use paths around the park than would use this, but, but you do see fitness classes down here. I mean, there are in the pavilions down here. It's going to get used, but I still think that we should go through and.
I have a question for the manager. Oh, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
Yeah, trustee Bills?
Does that affect our liability policy? Because that's a lot.
Not anymore than any other park.
Okay.
If you're worried about liability, then take down the swing sets and the weight spaces.
I actually asked that at our meeting.
Oh, okay.
Treasurer Rice?
Oh, um, I was just going to say, I actually asked that at our, our meeting as, as well when the, the four of us met, but, um, I, I love this idea. I mean, it hits, we've, we've talked about, um, parks um, with the ARPA funding and stuff and needing to get, um, more fitness stuff out and needing to diversify. And, I mean, it, it hits every single thing on there. Um, I believe we're already planning, um, sidewalks down here, correct? And that's already been in the plans. There's tons of pathways back here that you can walk down and around, so I mean, that's already a thing for right here. You've got your ball field, you've got Commission on Aging, you know, everything all right here. The kids' play sets there, there's something for, you know, parents to do while watching their kids' game or something, you know, there's, it's, um, handicappedable, it's from four, ages fourteen on up, you know, and very minimal things that would, I mean, yes, with every piece of equipment, you need upkeep. Um, there's going to be costs of that, but in the grand scheme of things, it's probably minimal. Um, and, you know, our, you know, like we've already mentioned, our ARPA funds, um, you know, it's a very small amount compared to what we're getting for ARPA funds. Um, yes, it would be nice to have that conversation, and I'm not saying that. But whether we use ARPA funds or not, I think this is a wonderful project to do. Great, a, a great thing to help get, get the community active and, and there's not a whole lot of places in the area that have this kind of setup. Especially, you know, where you're able to, to watch the kids and stuff like that. And, and I think it would draw more people to wanting to use McDonald Park in that, in my opinion.
I think it's a great project too. I just think we haven't had a chance to discuss ARPA, but overall, I'm for it.
Trustee Brown?
Yeah, I think, I think one thing we're all overlooking when we talk about paths and things like that is what I find in these parks here, and I see one, there's a few that I.
what I find in these parks here, and I see one, there's a few that I actually work around, that it's handicap accessible. I see a lot of people who are in terms of this, in these kind of parks, their kids, um, that, that can't go a half a mile, quarter mile. Uh, people with long COVID, uh, with other handicaps, that, and our elderly, for sure elderly. Um, yeah, they can ride your buddy around the Blacktop Trail, and I'm not against the Blacktop Trail. And James, I understand exactly what you're saying. I understand exactly what you're saying, but this is, this is a little different. There's a reason why Union Township was picked out for this. Um, as far as the cost, very minimal, 168,000 dollars. We're talking about 104, 1,400, 1.4 million we got in ARPA funds. And this is something that we've been wanting to bring to our parks and exercise. I think this is a, and, and, and it's being supported, even if it's $30,000. But it's not our $30,000. We do have a, we do have support behind this right now. If we go out and do anything else, then we're on the hook for the whole thing. Um, more likely in the engineering or whatever may be involved in it. I think Mark, uh, the manager's done exceptional work by figuring out a perfect location for it. I am 100% for this.
Absolutely.
So I, I went through some of the same, I think, thought processes that Trustee Thering went through. In fact, Trustee Thering and I had a conversation regarding this. Um, my, my initial gut was, wait, ARPA funds? We were getting to a place where I think we're becoming pretty clear that we, we as a board wanted to spend more time. Um, and we had initial discussions, but now the ground rules have changed. Let's really talk about that. I, let me say upfront, I'm very supportive of the project. Um, I'm likely to vote yes unless I hear something otherwise tonight for the motion. Um, but I want to tell you how I came to, uh, accept the idea of the ARPA funds. Because I didn't want to get the cart before the horse. And, and that is, we have a very healthy fund balance. And I asked myself the question, if we didn't have the ARPA funds, would I consider this? And the answer to me was absolutely, absolutely. And with that, um, when you look at how the ARPA funds are formulated now and what we're allowed to use them on, it is a one-time gift that we're, we're given essentially to our community, to improve our community. And whether or not we're using ARPA funds or general funds, to me, it, it really doesn't matter. Um, and, and I think that's why our manager was saying, let's use the ARPA funds. Because there's a time limit on that. There's not a time limit on our general funds. And if, if we end up coming up with a 1.4 million dollar ARPA idea that we just, we all love, and we want to do it, and we decide to do it, then we'll take, what is it? 215,000 out of the general fund to meet that gap that we made by creating, taking some of the ARPA funds. Um, but I also felt, as our manager indicated, that this seemed to fit with a lot of the discussion we've had. Um, and, and your comments, and I think Clerk Cody was speaking to this, Trustee Brown, um, and I believe someone else. Maybe it was Treasurer Rice? Forgive me if I get it wrong, but the comments that we had about reaching different demographics for some of our facilities. And I really felt this does that. And I know the city has something similar, but this seems to take it a step further. Um, I do love the path idea, but this doesn't preclude that either. Um, and so that's the thought process I went through as I wrestled with this. Because I too struggled with, wait, ARPA, we're going to have discussions about that. Um, but it doesn't, in my mind, preclude us from still having those discussions. Uh, and still, we have a general fund balance that's very healthy. And if we have projects we want to get done and we think is better for the community, then we'll appropriate the funds for that.
Right. Well, and I'm, I'm with Trustee Houck. I, I'm very practical, and you're right, Trustee Houck, you and I talked about pumps and, 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 and different things like that, which all benefit the community. But this here, I think where they can, they, they can touch it, they can feel it, they, and what, what they get out of it when they leave it, it actually, the, the benefit is more like a, a thank you when they leave. Um, and that, that, that's what brought me around to just feeling that, when I read the packet here a while ago, that was just such a great idea for the demographics and the other things that we talked about. But just what we can do to the community other than just putting a pump station in or changing a screw or something like that, that does benefit the community, yes, but this benefits in a different way. Thank you.
Trustee Thering?
Yeah, um, also I've, in, listening to some of the things that are being said, you know, it's only this amount of dollars. Well, if it's this amount of dollars for this, and there's potentially another project on Bloomfield coming up, this amount of dollars. Eventually, and, and they're, and they're all going for worthwhile things. So it's not like, it's, it's not a negative thing. But eventually, we'll have no amount of dollars, and we've had a couple-minute discussion on a potential completely new park. You know, I don't know what something like that would cost. I don't even know if that's even still an interest, but I, and to your point, I guess, if that's something that we see fit to do, we can always go to the general fund. But maybe the ARPA fund is the better heading to put that under.
I, I think your point's valid. I think just to put in words that, um, helped me with what I think you just said, which is, we don't want to deplete the ARPA funds to the point where then, um, we can't do the, the thing we do come up with, right? I mean, as we continue to brainstorm. Is that reasonable?
If we had the discussion, excuse me, if we had the discussion that we're going to have, and really said, you know, hey, we want to do, we want to do as many different things as we can, then I would absolutely feel better about that.
Let me ask you a question. So it, I mean, not that I'm suggesting, um, tabling this, but, but it was brought up, and I'm curious. Minor standing, the reason you brought this before this board today is sensitivity and timing because you felt there was opportunity to defray some of the costs with grants, of which there was what, one or two left for this year in the state?
One.
One?
That's what it says in the paperwork.
Excuse, all right, thank you. One grant left. Um, and my assumption, from what you said, is that that's why you, the timing is what it is on this.
Yeah, there, there's two reasons, both related. One, that there, there is a timing thing. Um, I don't know what the value of $30,000 is for somebody's name on a piece of equipment. You know, you see AT&amp;T football stadium, and, you know, it's, it's common. Um, the discussion, oh, in the other piece, um, is that it locks into 2022 pricing because we'd be able to buy the equipment, we'd have to store it over the winter. Uh, but we buy the equipment this year, that locks into 2022 pricing. We're guessing that it'll be 15% more next year. Um, the, I, I would like to, you know, draw your attention to page 31. I, I know we're talking about $215,000. Um, but let's not think that it's $215,000 for the, uh, fitness unit and the equipment. That's $142,000. You need a concrete base, that's going to cost you some money no matter what you put down. Um, you need somebody to install this stuff, so, you know? But, but this is an all-in in pricing. 215, if we are successful with the grant, 30,000, that's 193 net. If we're doing the art piece, that provides another $5,000 to us. That's 190 net now that we're cash out the door, uh, net to us. And then if we're successful, the 2% grant, the net, net, net would be even less. So I just want to make sure you're aware of, of that piece. Uh, the discussion is in terms of the use of ARPA funds. Um, it feels like it's mostly about, we haven't had the opportunity for a larger discussion. And I'll just simply, I may be completely off-base on this, but the use of the ARPA funds is, with, except about three exceptions, are the same uses that you're allowed to use the general fund money for. So I've heard for six years, four years, three years, for this board, two maybe, what your priorities are. Um, so I don't need a discussion on ARPA funds to understand what your priorities are. Um, all the discussion, and it is clearly your discussion. But yes, we brought it to you because we have a chance for 30,000 to 35,000 with the art piece. Um, and then to preserve, you know, some, um, pricing protection that, you know, we, we know every six months we lose, you know, there's a lot left with, a lot higher prices with the, way the world is right now.
Thank you. Questions, comments?
One other thing is, I mean, I like the project, don't get me wrong. Another thing, though, is I think here in a little bit in this meeting, we're going to get asked to use some more ARPA funds. So.
You're going to be alerted that you'll be asked.
Well, okay.
Uh, so we, so you've already talked to Priority Health, and they've already agreed to do this. If we pass the resolution, is that where we're at?
No, it's that we're putting together the application.
Okay.
And one of the pieces of the application is, for the grant, is the resolution of Intera.
Call the question. Roll call.
Okay. Any objection? Go ahead, sorry.
Supervisor Milky?
Aye.
Clerk Cody, yes. Treasurer Rice?
Yes.
Trustee Bills?
Yes.
Trustee Brown?
Yes.
Trustee Houck?
Yes.
Trustee Thering?
Thank you.
Motion passes six to one, if I got the tally correct.
Correct.
Yeah.
Thank you, Board. I appreciate the discussion. That brings us to completes item 11B, takes us to item 11C. Uh, property transfer affidavit, penalty waiver approval request resolution. Uh, as I understand, this is coming from our assessing department through an audit process. Mr. Stuldry, do you have anything to introduce on this?
Just that you're being asked to adopt a resolution allowing the township assessor to waive penalties that are applicable to buyers of certain properties if they fail to timely file the property transfer affidavit for. The Property Tax Act requires the penalties be levied. Um, if you don't file these affidavits timely, unless a resolution's adopted to waive the penalties. I will say, we don't currently collect the penalty. Um, we haven't, I'm not sure why. The, well, the reason why is for the same reason we're recommending that you approve this resolution. Is that it's just very administratively time-consuming and cumbersome. The penalties range from $5 a day to $200 a day, depending on the type of property, residential, commercial, et cetera, et cetera. And there's, um, up to certain maximums again for the different types of property. Um, so we feel that the time and energy and ill will that will be created by trying to track this stuff down and track these folks down is not worth the, uh, the revenue. And so we're recommending that you approve the resolution.
I'll make a motion to authorize by resolution the township assessor to waive penalties for constituents for failure to file property tax or property transfer affidavits timely. Support.
Motion by Houck, support by Brown. Uh, questions, discussion? Trustee Bills?
Uh, it's never going to surprise me how much I learn here. Um, I just, uh, I thought this stuff, property transfers were done through the county. Everything I, I ever bought gets filed with the county. I don't understand.
The paperwork is recorded at the County Register of Deeds. Much of the paperwork, maybe all of it, I don't know. But in terms of property tax affidavits, principal resident exemption paperwork, that's all handled at the local level.
So then the, so then, I'm sorry to be so ignorant, but I've never had to do that. I live in Union Township, I bought a house here, never filed one. That was done at the time of my closing, maybe?
Probably, the, probably.
If somebody knows what they're doing, okay.
Yep.
Not everybody does.
No, I know. Okay.
Why, you use real estate agents often, and title companies, and even lawyers if you don't have a real estate agent.
Okay.
Those are, those were questions I didn't even know enough to ask. So I appreciate them.
Yes, sir. I just, I was just like, what? Okay, that's why I paid that huge commission. Got it. Check, check.
Other questions, comments? I, I have a question, and maybe I, um, didn't glean from my reading properly. Um, but this came out of an, an audit process of the assessing department and how this is handled. Is that accurate?
It did.
And so part of the audit, if I can follow up on the question, a part of the audit is, um, looking for that waiver because that's, that's best practice? Question mark?
Uh, and I'll back up just a little bit. There's a, it's referred to as an AMAR review. It was put into place by the legislature several years ago to try to prompt the assessing folks and the assessing industry to pick up, I'll say, their game a little bit. The state had thought throughout, state treasury, the state tax commission had thought that across the state writ large, that there was a lot of improvement that could be done at the assessing level. So they did a lot of things. And one of them was, they instituted this AMAR review. And AMAR assessing, something, I don't know, share if you know what it means or not, but, um, you could be looking that up while I'm fumbling with it. The, uh, but that's done every two years. And we had our last one done when the former assessor was here. I don't know, this one might not have come up at that point. But there were several deficiencies that we had to file a corrective action plan on. And we did, and they, that was approved, and we implemented those, and so life goes on. And then Union Township was up again for the review two years later. And so we've gone through that. We will end up, and I haven't seen it yet, the full report from the auditor, whoever that is. Um, but one of the items that came up out of that was we were not levying and collecting the penalties. And yet we didn't have a resolution to support not doing that. And so this action tonight, we probably should have had the resolution in place years ago, even within the time I've been here. But now, coming tonight to give us the, to paper the file, so to speak, to support what we're doing or not doing.
That, that's helpful, because I, I don't know if I missed it in my reading, um, but I was not making that connection you just made, so I appreciate the answer.
AMAR is audit of minimum assessing requirements.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right, we have a motion on the floor. Um, I have no further questions. Board? Seeing none, this is roll call vote. Uh, to, uh, approve, uh, resolution to approve the property transfer affidavit, penalty waiver approval process that Union Township is using. Clerk Cody?
Supervisor Milky?
Yes.
Clerk Cody, yes. Treasurer Rice?
Yes.
Trustee Bills?
Yes.
Trustee Brown?
Yes.
Trustee Houck?
Yes.
Trustee Thering?
Yes.
All yeses?
Uh, resolution passes unanimously. That brings us to item D, 11D on our. Resolution passes unanimously. That brings us to item D, eleven D on our agenda. Twenty twenty-two tax rate request form resolution. Mr. Stuldryer, would you like to introduce this?
Thank you. And this is a new item for the board. You have not seen this before. In years past, we're asking that you approve Union Township's twenty twenty-two tax rate request for the twenty twenty-two tax year and to authorize the supervisor and the clerk to sign this. This is required to be filed with the county commission and the county clerk. The purpose of the form is to communicate, one, to communicate what the millage rates are. And then we need to also demonstrate that the rollbacks that often come into play on millages, but not so much specifically in Union Township, but every other place I've worked, there's potential for headly rollbacks and other rollbacks. There's a, there's two of them that are required in state law. And so there's, this is how that gets communicated and documented. In the past, I was informed by the prior assessor that I can sign this thing. So we've always filed it. I've signed it. And then I'm not sure what prompted me to start and, something prompted me to look into this a little bit more recently. And so I did some more reading. I reached out to MTA. I went to online webinar on this form. And it became clear to me that the board needs to approve this. And so these are the millages that would be, and you've, there's so many, you may recall when you approved the budget, there's a resolution that's, part of the appropriation resolution that also stated the millages that you're going to be levying. So you may think this is redundant and all that, but whether it is or isn't, it's required to be filed at county level by September thirtieth. These millages on this form are the same ones that were in your budget recommendation and they'd be the millages that will be on the December twenty twenty-two tax bill.
Is this something we'll have to do every year?
Yes.
So should we do it in January every year then, or?
I haven't got that far yet. I, I'm not sure.
We won't have it yet.
Yeah, there's a lot of numbers that go into this that the assessor has, the local assessor has to get certain information from the Department of Equalization at the county level. I think they have to get some information from the state, like inflationary cap numbers, that kind of thing. And if, for instance, to, to trustee Houck's point, we could have presumably a millage vote.
Yeah.
And we'd have to amend this thing, say, in November. We would amend it, submit it again. But the original needs to be filed by September thirtieth. I'm not sure how early this could be developed. I'd have to check with the assessor.
And, and just, I don't know if this helps your question, trustee Houck. I got an email from the county and I, I'm going to guess on the date, but it was probably in a July, beginning of August that they sent this out to all the supervisors. And it was just a statement of, here's what we know from past. Kind of don't forget to do this. So it's not like that notification at least that I saw was too long ago. We have that introduced. I'd be happy to.
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
Make a motion to approve the charter township of unions two thousand twenty-two tax rate request form six fourteen L dash four zero two nine for the two thousand twenty-three tax year and to authorize the township clerk and supervisor to sign the form.
I'll support.
Wow. Motion by Brown. Support by, I think I heard Bills first too. She's, she's quick tonight. Anyways, mo- motion on the floor. Further discussion or questions?
Who'd you get? Who seconded it? Bill?
I, Bills is what I, I, I heard three, but I think it came out of trustee Bills.
Well, I need to know what we write down.
Okay, I heard Bills. Are you, the others that put in the motion or support, okay with that?
That's fine. Okay.
I'm not going to cry over it, so.
Let her have the signatures.
All right. Any other discussion on this? Questions? Roll call vote. Clerk Cody, the, on the motion to, forgive me? I don't have it in front of me, so I.
Charter Township of Unions twenty twenty-two tax rate request for the L four twenty-nine.
That, thank you very much. Everybody knows what we're voting on?
Yes, sir.
Roll call, please.
Supervisor Milky?
Yes.
Clerk Cody, yes. Treasurer Rice?
Yes.
Trustee Bills?
Yes.
Trustee Brown?
Yes.
Trustee Houck?
Yes.
Trustee Thering?
Yes.
All yeses?
Thank you much. That finishes item eleven D, brings us to eleven E, which was added at the beginning of our meeting, which is presentation of the performance review of our township manager, which we largely as a board performed at our last meeting. And through that process, we did an aggregation of our collective thoughts through discussion. As you all know, I, I collected that with the help of the treasurer as far as scoring our manager and then tried to reflect the comments that were on the papers that were given to me. Trustee Houck had some comments. Feel free to share those. Well, you can give them, give them to a manager another time because I think he'd like to.
I wrote them on my agenda from the last meeting.
So I want the record to reflect that even though they're not in this document, that trustee Houck came prepared with those. So with that, it is our responsibilities aboard through our governance policy, policy governance, excuse me, to do this review. And the manager has been given the document that was circulated. And I, I guess, I'm just going to highlight a few items here for the benefit of the public. And if anybody would like to expand on anything that I, that I skip over, feel free to jump in, okay? But we basically went through our policy governance on global ends and executive limitations. The scores are such that it's, a one is not something you want and a five is very desirable. And then everything in between is on a scale. Regarding global ends, how is that possible?
Yeah, you had thirty-five points.
Yeah, I, I typed those.
I know.
Thank you for that, trustee Bills.
I was hoping you were going to mention it. I just.
I appreciate it. In the section, in the section where the aggregate scores are, when I was typing out possible points, it indicates twenty-five possible points for global ends when it should have been thirty-five. So our manager was scored by this board, twenty-five point three points of a possible thirty-five. Executive constraints, our manager was scored forty-eight out of fifty-five. That's a total points of seventy-three point three out of ninety possible with an average score of exactly four point zero. Four point zero is described as exceeds expectations. And so I think I can safely speak for the board in indicating to our manager that you're doing a fine job, sir, and then we appreciate you being here. Always stuff to work on, but a four average across the board is pretty strong. And then there were plenty of comments that were shared. Would any trustees or board members like to add to what I've said? Trustee Bills?
I have one comment. So, you know, lately in the news, you've heard about people quiet quitting where they do the very minimum and just enough not to get fired. Well, that is not manager Stuldryer. He does the maximum he possibly can, in my opinion, to make sure that the job is done very well. And so just wanted to mention that that's how I feel about that.
Anybody else? Okay, I'd like to, we, we've spoken to our manager. He got to sit in and listen to our debate two, a meeting ago. He's had the opportunity to review this document for the last, at least a couple of days, I think. And I want to give you the opportunity to speak to our review of you if you disagree or agree or just have general comments.
Thank you, and I'll just take a moment. First, I want to thank you for the consideration, the time all of you put in on this. There's no question that this is a good review. I, I I really appreciate seeing that. An average score of a four exceeds your expectations. That is always my goal. It sounds like in the main that you all think I, I am, so I'm very grateful to receive that input. I have seen the, and read where you all feel there could be some improvements made and I fundamentally, you know, agree with that. Couple of them center around the monthly report, one, the timeliness of it. I knew that before it was said. And then the level of detail. And there is undoubtedly a better way to present that information. Your time is valuable and these reports can reach to eleven or twelve pages. The original intent was that it capture both routine activities because I feel the routine does not get enough attention by usually anybody in an organization, particularly a boss. But, you know, something as routine as payroll or AP, you never hear about it because we do it so good. That doesn't mean it's easy. But you all sure will hear about it if we, you know, don't pay twenty-five people. Screw up or, you know, your vendors don't get paid for a couple of months, so. That was part of the intent, but it does make it lengthy and, and I think there's a way to carve out some of the more important items and put those at the top. And then if you want to go through the, so I appreciate the feedback and I'll, I'll attempt to implement those. The only because it's on the review document that'll go into the file. And Treasurer Rice had alerted me that this was going to be in the comments section. But there's a comment that says under Treasurer Rice's name that she has heard from people or peoples that on many Fridays, they say that the township manager is not available. And that may or may not be true. If it's considered a drop in appointment, I'm not available Monday through Friday normally for those. The old guard allowed that to happen. I don't. And and then I am salaried. And at the end of the day, or at the end of a week, you know, I'm probably working way more than forty hours anyways. So if you don't see me around on a Friday afternoon, on occasion, maybe with more regularity in the summer, you know, I am booking the time. I got time. So I just kind of wonder. Because this had come up before several years ago. I could connect the dots in some degree. So I might ask for consideration that that statement be removed because I don't think it's on point.
That's fine with me. You know, like I said, I, I mentioned to you, you know, when I put it on the sheet that, you know, I had had those couple of people tell me and I'm like, well, I'll, you know, I'll make mention to it. Not expecting it to be in the one from the, the group, but it was on my sheet.
But other than that, and I don't want this to take away from the general comment. As I've always said and continue to say, I, I really like working for Union Township. I like working for this board. I like serving the citizens of Union Township. I like living in central Michigan. And I love working with the folks in this organization and, and trying to collectively accomplish the things that the board wants to see done. Thank you for your time and thoughtfulness.
Any objections to, two corrections then to this? Removing that one statement and correcting the thirty-fives from twenty-five? I'll, I'll do that and send that out. I would like to add too that the contract that we have with the manager doesn't state hours.
Yes.
Just, just for the record.
I'm not an hourly employee.
Right. I mean, it doesn't state that what your hours need to be. Your, your job is to get your job done. And I know as an employer with my employees, that's my expectation is get your job done.
Out there wants to know, I'll be here all day Friday after, Friday.
And I, just, just to clarify, I did mention to those individuals, they were drop-ins. And I said, if you want to talk to him, make an appointment. Because I believe you have a lot of meetings that usually happen on Fridays anyway, but either way, I did mention, you know, call you up and make an appointment, so.
Well, on that point, I think it's worth, I think it's worth mentioning, off topic a little bit, but when I first started working here, the standard operating procedure was that if you wanted to walk in this door and talk to a manager or a zoning administrator or anybody, the expectation was you get let in, you walk back or they come, somebody comes and get you and you're expected to walk out. And I, I said, well, I'm not going to do that. And I let everybody in here know that they don't need to do that either. Can't get anything done and it's just kind of rude. So to come in and expect to, you know, just be able to get ahold of Peter Gallone, just because you walked in the door. You know, it's, it just couldn't work that way.
No.
And so we just add a little formality. I'll meet with people all day long. I just need an appointment.
Well, you need time to prepare for the meeting too.
Yeah.
You can't just spring something on somebody. That's ridiculous. I wouldn't do it either.
Clerk Cody?
I'm like scrolling way back because you guys kept going. But when you're adding stuff in, are you going to add in Houck's comments too?
I'd be happy to.
If you want them done.
Yeah, yeah, no, absolutely. I'd be happy to.
And then one more thing?
Mm-hmm.
I mean, you have to make an appointment to talk to me too, so.
And me too.
I mean, there's just, it's difficult to stop what you're doing and you can't mess up stuff like that. So you have to, you know.
Yeah. And I did want to mention a, a little bit of overachieving on manager Stuldryer's part here. On what manager needs to improve on, little did I know he already did it because it was on our agenda today. For, for those that don't know, I put, you know, trying to get a more diverse activities and stuff for people. So we actually put it on it tonight, so.
So his number will go up next time is what you're saying?
Right. I mean,
Coincidence.
I know.
All right. I just want to ask this board, this, the second time we've done the process the way we have. For those board members that have been here longer, there's been different process, processes that have been done.
This is better, yeah.
Much better. Much better.
So next year is what we plan, right?
Yes.
Any improvements to offer that, to the process?
I really liked this year that we had Mark actually sit in. Sorry, sorry. Manager Stuldryer sit in on this meeting or all of the meetings. Just it, he, he would get to see it anyway. However, you know, it, it was nice having him here with us, so.
I just think that we have a hard time in the ends portion.
That's right.
Answering those questions because it talks about what residents feel or what they do. We don't really know. We're only guessing, you know? Do they thrive? I have no idea if they thrive. They have the opportunity to thrive, you know, but we don't know. Maybe next time, take that out of the overall score, you know, make them separate. That's the overall average for that. That's the overall average for the manager.
Just, I almost did that.
We should just add it just for next time, just to know, you know?
Yeah. Yeah.
This is how we feel.
It's good to go through that, but, um, yeah, the executive limitations are a much better representation of manager. Trustee Thering?
I believe we talked about having a work session about just going over the questions.
We did.
I, I, I mean, I would like to do that at some point. You know, just, just to say, do these apply, are these...
Or if they were worded different?
Or worded different, I would also be interested, you know, that, that's our homework. Also, if the manager has questions that might better help him, then maybe our additional questions, one or two or three or something like that, I don't know. Maybe not, you know, that he knows specifically, you know, we don't ever talk about whatever. I'd like to have something down, just to see what they think about that, to help him.
So, that, that, if I may? Are you good? Um, that was how I was going to try to close this out a little bit, is then turn to the manager and, and ask you... This, this tool is an opportunity for us to give you direct feedback in a fairly formal way, as one voice. And part of its intent is also help you do your job better. And so, if that, at least that's how I interpret it. And if part of the goal of this process is to help you improve at what you're charged to do, what's missing here, or what shouldn't be here, from that perspective? Does that question make sense to you?
It, it does. From my, from my perspective, I think the process is pretty good. I think the form is pretty good. You know, I think to spend a lot of time wordsmithing is often... I'm not sure how productive that really is, because it can kind of get into just wordsmithing. The reason for the content of the tool is is because it's stated in Policy 4.4 of your governance policy. Basically says two things, or there's two things the manager is responsible for. Accomplishing the ends that the board has articulated, and doing so in a manner that does not get outside of the limitations that are articulated throughout Section 2. There's four sections in your governance policy manual. Section 1 is ends. Section 2, and ends are what we're trying to effectuate, accomplish. Section 2 is putting limits on how far I can go to accomplish those ends. And the other three get in, are, are more about the board's activity, Sections 3 and 4. So as it relates to the policy, I think there's pretty good alignment. So I'm actually, think this is on point with your policy. I... You know, you, you see these things, people start going, "Three-point-two-five versus three-point-seven-five," and all that nonsense. You know, my responsibility is to, and the responsibility of any staff person, is to meet the expectations of the position, or of the bosses. You know, and if I'm meeting the expectations, you know, I'm good. And this allows for a little bit, a little more deeper dive into that whole thing. And I, I'm guessing collectively, you probably all spent, you know, twelve hours on the exercise, if not more. Each of you probably spent at least an hour, probably more. You've probably spent, you know, three or more. So, you know, you, you know, as a board, you already spent twelve hours on the exercise. And I think it's producing what I need, anyway.
And I think that's my question, is it useful to you? I know I've asked you that privately, I wanted to ask you publicly.
It's very useful.
Well, you're, you're worth the twelve hours.
Yes.
Anything else on this?
No.
All right, moving on, that finishes our new business. That brings us to item 12 on the agenda, Extended Public Comment. Extended public comment is, comment is restricted to five minutes regarding any issue. If you choose to address the public, please state your name and address for the record. Do we have anybody remote? We have nobody else even listed remote, so I'm not going to worry about directions at this point. Nobody here publicly, but we will open up Extended Public Comment at 8:31 PM. Seeing no one, no one coming forward, we'll close Extended Public Comment at 8:31 PM. That closes item 12 on the agenda, brings us to item 13, Manager's Comments. Mr. Stooldryer, you're back on the floor.
Thank you, just a couple. If you're not aware, Chris Radar retired effective September 2nd of this year. So he's been a long-term employee. We had a little celebration for him over at Jameson Park Pavilion. Brought a couple grills over for lunch one day, and had whoever could make it from the organization attend. The, um, it's your next meeting, I just, heads up, two things. Your, we've discovered that your board matrix in the area of ZBA, we have some errors in the expiration dates. And I think a couple of us might have noticed it. They're listed as all basically the same, and that shouldn't really be, because they weren't appointed all at the same time. So we're going to have something in front of you where we won't be needing to make new appointments, we'll just be needing approvals to change some term expiration dates. And you'll see a, a stagger that then becomes more apparent there. So that'll be on your agenda, and we are, as I alluded to, the Road Commission approached the administration a couple of weeks ago. Idea basically being, next year, they're going to be working on Broomfield, probably a large section, I don't know all the pieces, but essentially from Isabella to Mission. Not all that needs to be repaired, but some of it does, some of it's in desperate need. And some of Broomfield, as you get west of Crawford, needs a lot of attention. Well, we have the road closed now, and the idea was, why don't we take advantage of this opportunity to redo Broomfield from the eastern edge of the existing project up to the city limits, or the end of the township limits?
Western edge of the project, right? No, you're right, eastern edge, my, my apologies, thank you.
And it actually extends a little bit into the city, where if, if you were really noticing, the pavement's kind of rough, and then all of a sudden you cross a particular line in the road, and it's nice, even before you get to Crawford. And it's like that all the way from the university. Well, back behind that is kind of rough. So, there was a, an outreach made by the Road Commission, maybe we could tackle that. It's, uh, it, if it's not, I believe it's Class A road now, and it would remain a Class A, and it's pulverizing, it's exhausting asphalt. I think the base is probably still good, maybe replacing part of the base, but it's not a complete rebuild. And that was offered to us, that opportunity, at a three-hundred thousand, it's about a $500,000 job. It came to us as three-hundred thousand for the township, two-hundred thousand for the Road Commission. We had some further discussion. What you're going to find in front of you next week is that that is split evenly. And it would include the wide, I believe it's six-foot, the wide shoulders. So I think we've made some little bit of progress in that area, because there wasn't a
Yeah.
Discussion about whether they were in there or not. So that'll be coming forward. And, so I just wanted to give you that heads up. And then I also, and I, I'm, I'm not looking to have a discussion on this, I just want to make a comment that, following the last board meeting, when I came into work Thursday morning, I spent about an hour and a half talking with the employees that were bothered by some of what they'd heard out of the board the night before. And I don't want to go into all that again, but they had some reasons to be upset. And I just want to remind the board that you, as leaders, your words matter. And the, the people in the organization that work for you, listen to you. And, and they... You matter to them, so. I'll just leave it at that. And, um... And I don't want to close on that, I'll just circle back to the review. I appreciate very much the time and thoughtfulness that you put into that. Thank you, that's all I have.
Very good. That brings us to item 14 on our agenda, Final Board Member Comment. Trustee Houck?
Well, you talked about ARPA funds, we need to get a little mini-session together on that. What about contract negotiations with employees, Mark, does begone or anything?
We have had an internal meeting with the management team. We have not begun formal negotiations, there has been, we have received the request to begin those. I anticipate that a recommended labor agreement will be brought to this body before the end of the year.
That's good, hopefully, I guess. Then the other thing, we're going to start talking about budget maybe next month, then, too? We're going to have a...
If not later this month.
All right.
If I can follow up on your comments, too, just briefly. The other, other item probably along those lines is the manager's contract will also be folded in with budget and the employee contracts, et cetera, so.
I see, we had that done last year by December.
Yeah, you'll, you'll see an agenda item on your next meeting. Don't know exactly what it'll be called, but something, you know, 2023 Manager's Employment Agreement, something like that.
Yeah, I just thought it was good that you...
It's an annual contract.
Thought it was good that you were bringing those items up, to put them on people's radars, and thought I'd add that one. You good?
I'm good.
Clerk Cody? Treasurer Rice?
I already said mine, I'm good.
Trustee Thering? Trustee Bills?
Couple things. Number one, I'm attending the Policy Governance Weekend in, uh, first weekend in October. Looking forward to that, down in Grand Rapids. Uh, number two is, I'm really excited about this new fitness thing at, at the Jameson Park. I'm sure that'll make a, a lot of people happy. And number three is that, uh, Queen Elizabeth passed away, and, uh, that, you know, I don't know how you guys feel about that, but I mean, that's an era, you know, so that is interesting. And, uh, you know, sad, too, but also, just time passes. But I, I still remember Princess Di's, uh, marriage and everything like that on TV, so. It's just interesting. That's all I got.
She was an amazing person, for sure.
Yeah, oh, my gosh, yeah.
Trustee Brown?
A couple of simple things. I believe our pump truck is getting close.
You look like Christmas.
I haven't checked lately, last I'd heard, I thought I'd heard October, but that's been quite a while.
I'm thinking it's within thirty days, Mark, tell me, tell me it's within thirty days, okay. Well, that's big news, that's great news, can't wait to be here. I have my brand-new bucket, my sponge, my hose all ready to wash it. Uh, second, uh, this is the second time I've gone through the manager evaluation. Seems like I had a lot more grip on it this time, I wasn't so white-eyed, you know? Going through it the first time, it's like, oh, how am I going to evaluate a guy that does all, you know? With that being said, I, I'm very proud that you got a four. I, I think that's wonderful. And I think it reflects on your staff, not only the ones here, you just have amazing staff, but that four should reflect all the way right down to the last guy you just hired, or whoever it was. To, it, it just shows this org, organization, how you, how and what you do with, with the staff, and the people you have underneath you. Makes you shine. I appreciate it, and so does my family. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's it.
I had one more.
You're sure, Trustee Bills?
I agree with Trustee Houck that an ARPA discussion is really in order, really in order. So we can prioritize, at least let the manager know what our priorities seem to be for these funds. You know what I'm saying, that's all.
So, what I, just to follow up on that, if I may? What I've heard, if I'm picking things up right, is if, you know, fall very often, our agenda's pretty full, with budget process. And if we don't have a, a meeting where we have a lighter agenda list, it's certainly worth scheduling a, a separate work session?
Either that or come in an hour earlier.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, we'll watch the agendas as we go, then, and...
I don't know about an hour early, Trustee Houck. I don't think that's possible, I mean, with my schedule, I'll have to make that another day.
That's fine.
Um, and I didn't have any final board member comment, but until Trustee Brown spoke, so I, I think we ought to have a ribbon-cutting ceremony, if nothing else, at least for Jeff to be there, because he's really excited.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I would actually like to come, too.
Put some press on it.
A vehicle washing ceremony, right?
Yeah. That's a big deal.
Let Jeff get up there and wax on, wax off.
Watch your board's labor.
Clerk, clerk, clerk Cody, can you contact a newspaper for us when they say that?
I'm just taking out of this that you're, you're going to be washing it, so. Like, oh, freak out.
I want to, I want to get this in the paper, you know? Line them up, line them up.
All right, with that, I'm happy to take any motion for adjournment, our business is done.
I'll make a motion, we adjourn.
Support.
Motion by Rice, support by Brown, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. We are adjourned.